But I mean, there's one thing that's.
That's what I'm saying.
It's only the B is not the.
Yeah. Right. Right.
Oh, that's nice.
Yes.
Oh, that's good. I think that's. And when I told us. Several things. And I still. I mean, I.
Yes, you did.
It's not signing on him.
But yeah. I. Did it so well, I was something. Job. Yeah. I find out. In the video. But it's hard. She should have listened.
Oh, for the.
Yes, sir.
Actually, you know.
I.
Yeah, just email me these like.
I know. We.
Okay, as always, we're just going to turn it and get back to this session, moving on to an educational presentation on the Capitol.
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I said.
Something. Yes. Yeah, so I'll. I want.
That needs to be updated, but it's a preservation of assets that's really critical. And ultimately, we want to make sure that when the students leave, we are. The economic impact is affecting this county. We want to make sure that. Their investment in the college and our investment in the college is an investment in them and their future and the county's future. Thank you. So why are we doing this? Why did we do this report and what's the focus of it? Well, it's threefold. The renovation of three academic buildings, Hudson, CBI, and Duchess. For the college's evolving needs. It's also the redefining of Hudson Hall as the center hub of the campus. As well as an academic achievement space. And finally, we want to create multiple centers of excellence on this campus. For the advancement of the individual departments. At the beginning of this process, we asked a whole bunch of questions. You just want to share a few with you quickly. What are the academic needs of the students? What tools and technologies do the students and faculty need to succeed? How can we create more collaborative atmosphere for the students and faculty? For better interactions? How can we help them succeed? What career offers, regional employment opportunities are there in our communities? And how can we best serve Duchess and Putnam County? And that's really the basis of all this. Ultimately, we looked at this as a multi-phase process. We can't do all these buildings at the same time. So it's a it's a series of of. Steps that we build on each, so that ultimately, we're not creating some. Space temporarily for students, but this is an idea to swing space, but this is. When we move somebody once, we move them permanently and they're in their new home. That's the best reuse of our taxpayer dollars. And it also is the the best plan for all the different departments. So in phase one, we're looking in addition to Duchess Hall, it's about eight thousand square foot addition. That will. Be able to relocate the students that are in the apartment that's currently in CBI. Into Duchess Hall and renovation of Duchess Hall for permanent relocations of a couple of the departments that are in CBI. And Duchess today. Phase two is CBI renovations. Phase three is Duchess Hall renovations and phase four is the Hudson Hall renovations. So each you'll see at the end that it's basically a year by year transition from one to the next. Duchess Hall phase one, again, the eight thousand square foot addition to Duchess. For the relocation of the P VAC program. And then in Hudson Hall, it's the renovation of the second floor for the IT department. Relocating from CBI. As well as student activities and the campus bookstore from Duchess. So that we have the opportunity to to transform those spaces for P VAC departmental use. Duchess Hall for the phase one, this is an illustration, planned illustration in blue of the addition at eight thousand square foot addition, which would be just to the south of the I Torium. It would include relocation of the TV studios from CBI. On the right is the existing and the left is one of the examples of the project that we did for a TV studio regionally. Similar with the control rooms. On the right is the existing one and the left is one control room that we did in a regional educational facility. Hudson Hall has wonderful views looking east and we don't take full advantage of those. And so student activities being relocated from where they are in Duchess. So that we can take the Ritz Lounge and expand it in the future. Relocating student activities to the fourth floor gives us the opportunity. A to have a surge synergy for the for the activities and the government. To be adjacent to the student hub of activity that's the future of Hudson Hall. But also, if you go straight out the door on the north end of on the fourth floor, you're immediately adjacent to. To Duchess Hall and to Drummond, which is where many of the activities that the Student Activities Department utilizes. The IT department currently on the first floor of CBI relocating that help help desk in the entire department. To the second floor of Hudson Hall gives the opportunity for them to be more closer to the to the energy and action of. What's planned for Hudson Hall. But also really focuses on and and gives technology a real importance on this campus. We want them to be central. We want them to that to be really accessible. And it shouldn't just be a doorway and a hallway to get information and help. You mentioned relocating the campus store. Once we move the campus store. To Hudson from Duchess, that gives us an awful lot of real estate to reimagine and to to move. The P VAC department into the balance of Duchess. The campus store. And cafe. You've had food service there. There's a there's a lot of discussion about bringing food service back into Hudson Hall. And if it's a student hub, it's a and a really nice amenity to have really adjacent to the learning commons and the student hub activities. Phase two in CBI. Increasing the tech teaching labs from six to thirteen. We're not increasing the size of the building. We're just adaptively reusing the building to create more than double the number of spaces for the allied health professions. And that would include rights as in nursing and EMT. Labs as well as creating a student hub within a CBI building for as an informal commons. Example of what that nursing lab could look like. Making sure that the EMT program has state of the art equipment and space specifically designed for them, which the current space does not. And to to create this student hub within each of the buildings that we're renovating, but in this case, CBI. So that it's not just an atrium with some chairs in the hallway. But it's actually a space that before, during, and after classes. It's an amenity for the students and staff to get together either individually. Or collectively to do everything that we want them to do on campus. Base three for Duchess Hall is consolidating the P VAC department. Modernizing practice and performance spaces. Creating a campus hub for meetings. As well as creating a connection on that first floor between Duchess and Drummond, which doesn't currently exist. Unless your kitchen staff going from one side of the building to the other. And so here's some examples of what the theater could look like. Renovating the existing theater, which has outdated lighting, outdated sound, acoustics, seating. And creating a really more of a modern theater for the college's use. Taking existing classrooms and transforming and reimagining what the classroom can and should be. For music. Or dance. Dance currently isn't in the building. Bring that in the building. Once we we move the. The bookstore out, this gives an opportunity to transform that space that's currently the bookstore into dance and and music space. Spaces. Black Box Theater is is a wonderful space today. It has some equipments and furniture that could be reimagined and rethought. That'd be another space to look at as we do our overall renovation as well as how do you get to it? Because today, to get to that space, you actually have to go through the Ritz Lounge. So is there an opportunity to rethink that halls on so that there's more of a direct access to the Black Box Theater? And then ultimately, the the Ritz Lounge, the Ritz Lounge, as we mentioned, for is is a very inflexible space today. It's a large room. How how can we create recreate that space so that it can be split into multiple different spaces when you need smaller groups? Or opened up or larger groups? And here's an example. It's one of our projects that's really local to where we are today. And it basically is showing. Utilizing flexible furniture, how we can transform that space and that room depending on the use.
That touches both things?
Yes, it is.
It's a good space.
Finally, phase four Hudson Hall transforming the core, which is the second and third floor into the learning commons. Most of that's. Today is the library and academic achievement. Consolidating the learning commons departments into Hudson. Currently, there are many different buildings on campus trying to bring as many of those to a centralized location. So there's a synergy and. A more of a a discussion and conversation between those different departments. Creating a student center hub of student life. And ultimately, modernizing the classrooms, labs, and offices that are up on the fourth and fifth floor. An example of how we could transform part of the library into more of a a learning common space with more technology, flexible furniture, rearrangeable. Taking computer labs and transforming them again. The computer labs that we have today have very fixed furniture. And so they're used by for one type of operation or teaching style. By having flexible furniture and different types of setups, we have the opportunity to have more flexible and different types of of education happening in those spaces. Taking some of the library stacks. Relocating or. Calling some of the library work books. And utilizing some of those alcoves so that we can create. Collaboration spaces so students can go in, whether it's individually or in small groups or with professors on campus. And have had meaningful conversations and not disturb or disrupt other people that are also utilizing a space just adjacent to where they are. Finally, the classrooms up on the fourth and fifth floor and trying to transform those so that we have modern acoustics, modern lighting. Better light control and better technology and furniture in the spaces. This library here shows. The plan in terms of when we would like to do these renovations. Obviously, it starts with the design phase where the different projects. And that leads into the different four different phases that we had mentioned before between. Starting with the addition to Duchess and renovation to Hudson, all the way through to renovating Hudson Hall as phase four. With that, I think I was planning to turn this over. I don't know. Does this is your opportunity?
Yeah, I'll just men mention to to the board. You can see the budget for the five years. It's a hundred and sixty three million dollar five year plan. We discussed it with some members of the county legislature. We've had meetings with them ahead of time. One of the things that came out of that the meetings is. We want you to start faster. We want you to start the design phase much quicker than is in the plan. So their thought process was is you already have money for CBI design. You already have money. For Hudson. You don't have money for Duchess yet. Put the did out on the street now sometime in July, if possible. Let's get responses back. All indications, you know, that they're going to approve additional money for design. But why wait months before the official process when it's something that you can get started now? So we've listened and we're doing what they said. And you can see the first year ask is mostly for the design month. And then as the years go on. The the asks get larger, but one of the things the legislature mentioned is they'd like to see pauses in the project. In case there was any shock to the economy for the county or money issues that we can pause projects and we we listened and we. So that's where you have these phases. So that's where we stand on the budget. Any questions for Eric?
So one thing I just want to say, as I've been saying for probably close to twenty years now, having meetings on capital projects. A capital plan is a requirement. It is a plan. As I always describe it, it is like a wish list. It does not mean that we are spending this money. Things change. Priorities change. This is kind of in a perfect world. This is what we were would do if this were to happen today. But this does not mean that we are necessarily going to do all of these things. Projects can change and every single thing would need to come before this board as well as the county legislature for approval. So these are not approved. This is simply a plan.
And remember, the state pays that to the budget.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you very.
Moving on to our liaison.
Hope to speak quickly, so.
We're freezing everyone out in here at the beginning, although it's at least a little warmer in here now. Whoever fix that, thank you. Uh, moving on to our liaison reports. Trustee Costello.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Thank you to the foundation for the chocolate bar dinner. Much appreciated. Three hundred and thirty nine thousand, three hundred and fifty three and change received from the estate of Gary Lindstrom. Hundred and ten thousand from the William Brown Foundation Incorporated. Hundred thousand to be applied to the Student Housing Support Fund endowed in part of Michael Dupree and Michael Fleischer's pledge of ten thousand for the twenty twenty five gala. Thirty thousand from an anonymous donor to create an E O P endowment, twenty five thousand and restricted of five thousand fund. Seventeen five received from George A. Strava. Charitable trust endowed scholarship. Eleven seven twenty five from the Gilbert Fingers and Wiry Burning Williams event. Very nice to see. Four thousand as a donation for the partnership and seventy seven twenty five from auction proceeds for D C C students as a result of one alum played with Bernie Williams at the event as well. Ten thousand from an anonymous donor to support several other programs, five thousand for D C C cares, five thousand for general support, all separate. Forty one forty seven fifty payment from Duchess County Regional Chamber of Commerce and the Chamber Foundation for the Duchess Community Rides and Food Fair. I will say, I thought that was a nice addition to have. I did stop by a couple of times throughout the weekend. And I can see that there's potential there as well in the future. They were very happy. So thank you for allowing us to do that on campus. Foundation staff or guests attended the Bernie Williams Q and A and a pre-event concert in May featuring Bernie and two D C C music students. Foundation received four awards during the SUNY CUAD conference in recognition for its excellence in creativity and strategy, strategic plan, mousepad calendar alumni spotlight, and March Fourth Giving Day. The foundation is participating, is a participating location in the Great Hudson Valley Scavenger Hunt, which will hopefully bring some folks to the campus. It should be bringing people to campus. There's all you. There's over a thousand people competing for the grand prize. Two new signs were installed in and at the foundation office and the foundation is relocated. Alumni Hall of Fame wall to bound hall. First floor to accommodate more award recipients and to better highlight that as well. Discussions ongoing for the M O U between the college and the foundation as well. And in lieu of reading all the upcoming events, I would certainly encourage everyone to look at them on the website.
Thank you very much. Any updates from the association?
I'm just going to go to the major one, and that is that Scott and Susan have been working really hard. On a plan that's been demanded by M and T Bank. And I'm three quarters of the way through, and I think it's really great. I think they will as well. I do have. You're going to see my comments. One of them is, I'm not sure that bankers understand stack stacks. For future degrees, micro credentials. Maybe we could. I suggest it's more. It might be easier for them because. Cycle micro credentials. My first time I heard, I was like, what the hell? So at any rate, but it's it's fantastic thing. As I said, I'm three quarters of the way through. I'll have it over to you tomorrow. I have comments. But this is a substantial step forward in where we've been in our negotiations and. The bankers would tell you that they've been demanding it for two years, and actually, that's not true. It's been far less time, and we were told to wait until we resolve the overpayment of interest, et cetera. So. But we're moving forward because that's the most important thing right now for the association really truly is to move forward with refinancing that line because. Otherwise, our financial advisors suggested that we try to stay with M and T Bank for a few years because. All that we've been doing here to increase enrollment, to increase the grade point averages of people in the dorms, et cetera, are paying off. If another institution, a lender, might not want to come in at this point exactly. So it's a matter of just hoping that they can persuade them with this document and our shiny present selves to get us out of there. Go, and I hope it'll be a three-year extension, not another one year, and we'll see what what happens when we come forward. That was the most important thing, but also I'm sure you're all aware, we had a great sports record this year. So that's a big part of because. Mr. Picat gives us very extensive reports when we went to the association and no, really detailed, like five pages at a time. So I'm just summarizing it, but we had a great record and will be having some of the same programs. Also, we expanded some of these sports teams that we have in the future. So that's about it. Anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, by the way, the foundation was very appreciative. The association was very appreciative that. You were able to grant the money toward to us to be able to satisfy the debt, uh, debt covenant ratio. But you, so thank you. Consider.
That concludes our workshop agenda. Does anyone on the board need a little two-minute break before we go into the board meeting? If not, we'll just go right on.
Uh, let me just can I just give this over to Ryan and Linda because the chairs there are the ladies aren't here?
Sure. I'm reading yours. I'll be joining. Yeah. All right, I am going to call the July twenty second meeting to order.
Mr. Frank Costello.
Present.
Mr. Stephen Caswell.
Present.
Miss Derek Cloud. Mr. Michael Dupree.
Present.
Miss Angela Fleslin.
Present.
Miss Lisa Gardi. Mr. Ebus Guzman. Miss Linda Pratt.
Present.
We went with it today.
Mr. Ryan Shuck.
Here. The rebel.
For her own present.
Right. Let's start with a pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance.
To the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under your heart, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a motion to have per the agenda. Allison Bush, second. All those in favor? Fine. And has anyone signed up for public comment?
Nothing.
So seeing no one has signed up, we will move on to consideration of the minutes. For the meetings held on May twentieth and June fourth. I trust that everyone's had an opportunity to review. Are there any actions that need to be made? Not can we have a motion to. For a second. All those in favor?
Fine.
I. Thank you. We got it. Thank you for being.
Let's take an Uber over, right?
I'll drive you home. Don't worry. I'll. To get a forum tonight, trustee Pratt had to take an Uber here, so we're very thankful for her and her Uber that offered through the season. Um, moving on to the committee, academic and student affairs. Trustee Shuck, I believe, will be presenting.
So I proposed a implementation of graduation courts recognizing club involvement. Here.
Right, yeah.
On campus leadership, the committee was in full support of the proposal, which advocates for the formal recognition of student contributions to campus through distribution and graduation boards. These courts would honor students involved in club leadership, student government, and sustain extracurricular activities. By institutionalizing this process, Duchess County Community College can align its graduation standard standards with the national trends, reinforce student belonging, and highlight the diversity and strength of its student body. Um. Student activities, they are gearing up for the fall semester. Falcon Fest is happening on Tuesday, September third and Wednesday, September fourth from eleven to three P M on the Pine Grove. Um, we are going apple picking on Saturday, September twenty first. Um, we are going apple picking on Saturday, September twenty-first, a outdoor adventure park on the twenty-eighth. We are going on a New York City bus trip on the fifth of October.
Wait, what are you doing this in?
Um, I honestly don't know yet. It just says New York City bus trip.
Okay.
Um, they do have a New York Jets versus Cleveland Browns game on November ninth, which is exciting. Um, Headless Horsemen, and there is a holiday trip in New York City also in December. That is all for now.
Two resolutions this month.
Okay.
This is the first page.
It is the first page.
Yeah.
I Ryan Shuck offers the following resolution to move its adoption. Whereas, this is the right one, right?
The deactivation of degrees. Yeah, sixty-three.
Whereas Duchess County Community College is committed to offering academic programs that meet and involving educational and workforce needs of students and the community. And whereas, the information management degree program has expired, sustained decline in student enrollment and graduation rates. And whereas, a comprehensive review of the program has indicated that its current structure and curriculum no longer align with the industry demands and student interest. And the college has determined that the instructional resources and curricular content of the information management program are better addressed and delivered through other existing or emerging academic pathways like degrees in computer information systems or computer programming. Whereas, the college has not admitted any new students into the program since twenty nineteen, nor does it currently have any enrolled students in the program. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of Duchess Community College hereby approves the deactivation of information management degree program effective fall twenty-twenty-five, pending final approval by the State University of New York and the New York State Education Department. And be it further resolved that the president of the college is authorized to take all necessary steps to implement this deactivation, including the submission of required documentation to SUNY and USET.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, resolution carries? Next resolution. Trustee Haswell, I don't know if you wanna say something before, since there is no discussion on table. I don't know if you wanna.
Yeah, so I'd I'd like to make a motion that we
Well, we have the re-revolution. Well, you can't discuss, well, my, why, I'm sorry, I'm a stickler for our tools of order. There is no discussion on table. That's why I just wanted, I know that you had planned on tableing the next resolution, so I do.
Do we allow it to be read and then the motion thing?
So I think um, trustee Haswell wanted to table this for the full board to actually be here for it. I know that you've worked really hard on this. Um, so if we have more board participation, I think that um, this would be better as opposed to us having minimal uh, attendance as well. So that's why he's planning on table like that. Okay, okay.
There's no urgency.
Exactly. And I think having the student body back for it and, you know, students speaking um, at the meeting would also probably be, I think he works really, really hard on this and um, we all recognize that. And I think kinda making sure that it gets the attention that it deserves is important. So that's why we plan on making, that's why trustee Council plans on making that, but didn't want to kind of, well, inside use some So um, if you wanna read that resolution and then um, we'll have a second on it and then anyone can make the motion to table. Alright.
I Ryan Shuck offer the following resolution and move its adoption. Whereas, the Board of Trustees of DCC upholds and promotes values of leadership, civic engagement, inclusion, and student success as essential components of the educational experience. And whereas, the development of student leaders and the strengthening of campus community are vital to fostering a sense of belonging, personal growth, and institutional pride among the student's body. And whereas, active participation in college-recognized student clubs, leadership roles contribute significantly to student graduation, academic persistence, and preparation for success beyond graduation. And whereas, the board supports efforts to further encourage student involvement, recognize exemplary camp- campus contributions, and celebrate the diverse leadership demonstrated by our students. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of Duchess Community College formally endorses the implementation of graduation courts as a symbol of distinction for students who demonstrate meaningful leadership and sustain participation in college-approved student clubs, clubs and organization. And be a further resolve that eligibility for such recognition shall be limited to students who have actively participated and contributed to officially recognize and approve campus clubs as verified by appropriate college personnel in standards established by the Office of Student Activities. And be it further resolved that the introduction of graduation courts for club involvement and campus leadership shall serve as both a recognition of achievement and visible celebration of values of leadership, community building, and shared responsibility championed by this board. And be it finally resolved that the college administration shall establish appropriate guidelines and procedures to ensure equitable and consistent implementation of this recognition and to communicate these opportunities to all eligible students.
Is ours.
Second.
Yep. Any? Thank you. All those in favor of table and signify by saying aye. Aye. Um, anyone against? Okay, so this resolution is tabled. I think we brought up at the Moving on to the board's policy, please.
Including that, many of the day, July ninth, um, it was in economic meeting. Um, Dr. Jordan reviewed the proposed changes to the existing smoking policy, which included a change in the title of the policy. The change was approved by the board policy committee and a resolution adopting the revised policy will be brought forward in just a few minutes. Um, and then the other things that we discussed were mostly just informational, informational updates. Um, one was uh, the the committee was provided with a copy of the board action plan, which was approved by the board via the resolution twenty twenty-five thirty-nine on April thirtieth. A progress report on that plan um, will be discussed in the in the committee in the coming months. And then we were just updated on the upcoming board meetings for the twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six academic year. So with that, I will bring forward the one resolution, which um, is the revised smoking policy resolution. So um, uh, Linda Pratt offers a resolution twenty twenty-five sixty-five uh, the following resolution um, and moves for its adoption. Whereas, in keeping with good governance practices, the Board of Trustees Policy Committee reviews board and college administrative policies on a regular basis. And whereas, based upon the review and input from members of the Board of Trustees, Policy Committee has determined that the title of the smoking policy needs to be revol- revised to include tobacco, cannabis, and alternative smoke. Now therefore be it resolved that based upon the recommendation of the Policy Committee and review by the Board of Trustees, the revised smoking policy which is attached and so shall be made part of the official minutes of this meeting will now be named the tobacco, cannabis, and alternative smoke policy is hereby and approved. Be it further resolved that the policy shall be effective immediately and that the board shall consider this policy again within five years or earlier, should it be determined revisions are needed prior to the scheduled review date. Do I have a second? I have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Any discussion?
Any discussion, sorry. Any discussion? Nope. Without that, um, all in favor, uh, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, I'm seeing that there is no objection, please pass it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Finance and Facilities Chair Caswell.
Alright.
A lot of resolutions.
The Finance and Facilities Committee met back on July fourteenth. And we also got an update on from K G and D, uh, the capital projects and it's a long project, as you've heard from the presentation during the workshop. And uh, you know, we thank them for all their efforts so far and we look forward to continuing to work with them for years to come. So, yeah. In addition to that, um, we had, we'll have nine bid uh, resolutions uh, tonight, which I'll go through in just a minute. Um, at our committee meeting, we received updates on the Center of Excellence and Business Industry and Innovation Financial Model. The operating budget for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, and the site work being done at DCC's main campus. Uh, in addition, during the meeting, the committee asked for an update on the sport field improvements and the bound hall, third floor renovations. And Dennis Nantino was able to provide committee with updates on these two projects. And that was really uh, the bulk of our meeting, so let me now go back to the resolutions. And again, we had some detailed in-depth discussion at our committee meeting to go through all of these. Uh, and we were able to then bring them forward to the full board with our recommend- with our recommendation to approve. So the first one. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash sixty-six, I offer the following resolution and move its adoption. Oh, I should stay upfront. There's many of them and I'm just gonna pick a key whereas and not read the entire resolution for each one, but just to give you the gist of what each resolution is for. So anyway, so the first one, twenty twenty-five sixty-six. Uh, whereas bids were solicited for the fitness court concrete slab construction. And whereas the funds were available through grant funding, college fund balance, and the DCC foundation, now therefore be it resolved that the contract for the fitness court concrete slab construction be awarded to A-Tech Concrete Company Inc. of Edison, New Jersey in the amount not to exceed sixty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
So second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Next resolution, twenty twenty-five dash sixty-seven, I offer the following resolutions, move its adoption. Uh, whereas, the bid was duly advertised and requested for the rebid of Hudson Hall mechanical upgrades. And whereas the funds for availability in the funds are available in various projects to cover the cost of these projects, now therefore be resolved that the bids received for the Hudson Hall mechanical project in accordance with the specifications be awarded to H V A C, the H V S, H fact contract to Flock Industries Incorporated for two million, three hundred and seventy-seven thousand. And the electrical contract be awarded to R L J Electrical Corporation for two hundred and six thousand, nine hundred dollars.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed, resolution carries?
Alright. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash sixty-eight, I offer the following resolution and move its adoption. Whereas proposals were duly advertised and requested for the purchase of software for online skilled trades training. And whereas the contract shall be for one year with the option of two one-year renewals. Uh, and the funds for year one will be made available from a grant. Now therefore be it resolved that the contract for the purchase of software on or online skilled trades training be awarded to Interplay Learning Incorporated of Austin, Texas. The vendor submitted the proposal in accordance with the specifications in the amount of twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. As mentioned, the uh, contract has an option for two uh, one-year results.
Yep. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, resolution carries?
Next resolution, twenty twenty-five dash sixty-nine, I offer the following resolution and move its adoptions. Whereas Duchess Community College currently leases the space in the city of Poughkeepsie for off-campus instructional space at the Family Partnership Center located at twenty-nine North Hamilton Street, Poughkeepsie, New York. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the president of the college to enter into a lease agreement with Family Service Services for seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-two square feet of space for off-campus instructional uh, instruction at the negotiated rate described above, which amounts to approximately fourteen thousand dollars one month and rent.
Second.
Any discussion?
I just wanna say one thing.
Yeah.
The Family Partnership Building looks fantastic and its renovation looks fully welcoming. And I think having our presence there is going to do nothing but continue to help that organization grow and thrive, so build and renew that lease.
And I think it's also so important to have services right in um, right in the city of Poughkeepsie that if someone is, you know, struggling with transportation and, you know, gas, the loop buses serve a lot of our students, but we have heard at any times that our student leaders, donors, that there are opportunities for improvement. So I think having services right in the city of Poughkeepsie is integral to our mission.
In case Ryan doesn't know this, for primarily the teaching, which is a second line issue and your G D D process.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, resolution carries?
Alright, resolution twenty twenty-five dash seventy, I offer the following resolution and move its adoption. Whereas the County of Duchess and the State University of New York require the submission of a capital project plan with estimated cost of construction and improvement projects for a five-year period. Now therefore be it resolved that the campus facilities projects listed on the attached document, which is to be made part of the minutes of this meeting, are hereby approved as Duchess Community Colleges five-year capital project plan for the period of twenty twenty-six through twenty thirty, et cetera.
Yeah, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any votes for a resolution to have? Halfway done.
Resolution twenty twenty-five dash seventy-one, I offer the following resolution and move its adoption. Whereas the current capitalization threshold for fixed assets at Duchess Community College is five thousand dollars in accordance with prior board policy and accounting standards. Uh, now therefore be it resolved that effective September first, twenty twenty-five, the Board of Trustees of Duchess Community College hereby approves an increase in the capitalization threshold for fixed assets from five thousand to ten thousand dollars. Be it further resolved that the president or his designee is authorized to implement this change and update relevant policies, procedures, and financial systems to reflect the new threshold.
So our second.
Second.
Can you explain what all this means?
Yes, so it's it's an accounting thing. Uh, so any, anything that you buy less than five thousand dollars today is just automatically expensed. If it's greater than five thousand dollars, capitalize it, put it on your balance sheet for that value and then depreciate it over a number of years. So the expense comes in over a number of years. Obviously, when you capitalize something, there's much more administrative work and different things uh, involved. Uh, so raising the threshold would actually, well, first of all, we asked the question, it was only like four or five different items for like thirty thousand dollars within that five to ten thousand dollars. So while it's not a lot, it does provide the opportunity to reduce the administrative uh, workload a little bit on the of the finance staff. So um, you know, the team recommended it and the committee agreed and supported it. So we're recommending to increase that threshold to just expense in the year that of purchase.
Right. Dividing it out over four years. So if you have something that you're dividing out over four years, you'd be carrying that on your book. It's something you owe. Um, rather than just being able to take it off all in one year. Does that make sense?
Yes, I got it.
Was there a second? I have a second. Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, resolution carries?
Resolution twenty twenty-five seventy-two, I offer the following resolution and move its adoption. Whereas, votes were received from HP for a hundred and fifty touchscreen laptops and a hundred and fifty non-touchscreen laptops. Whereas, funds were made available from operating fund balance. Now therefore be it resolved that the purchase orders uh, be issued to HP for a hundred and fifty touchscreens and a hundred and fifty non-touch uh, screen laptops in the amount of two hundred and twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars.
For a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, resolution carries?
Alright, resolution twenty twenty-five dash seventy-three, I offer the following resolution and move its adoption. Whereas, quotes were received from C D W. Three hundred HP LED monitors and three hundred L C D monitors and fifty thunderbolt docking stations. Uh, whereas, uh, funds will be made available from operating fund balance. Now therefore be it resolved that a purchase order be issued for C D W for three hundred HP LED monitors, three hundred L C D monitors and fifty thunderbolt docking stations in the amount of And fifty Thunderbolt docking stations in the amount of two hundred nine thousand seven hundred fifty-six dollars.
Second.
Thank you.
But I have a question.
Yes.
I know L E D means slightly many diamonds, but is L C D, I should have looked at.
Liquid crystal this one.
It is liquid crystal. Can you explain the difference?
Okay, uh, but basically L C D is an older panel type, uh, L E D is the more modern uh variation. But L C D is still very common in a lot of state or.
It's always in there, thank you.
Just for clarification purposes, so anytime we have a large purchase, if. Um, there's a state bid out there for it, we do not have to go out to bid on it, we can just buy right off the state bid, which saves. Our staff a lot of work and really helps us to get. The best prices available because you're buying with everyone in the state of New York, but where you see that we're going out to bid. These are um on things that where there's not a state bid present, so every time we're looking at, you know, kind of. These purchases, you always look to see if there's a state bid first, because hey, you'll get away better price if you're buying with everybody in New York. And B, it saves you the time of having to actually issue the bid and look through that process, so. Uh, that's why this is worded like that because it's part of that larger um bit. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed resolution carriers?
My final resolution. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash seventy-four, I offer the following resolution to move its adoption. Whereas quotes were received from Distributed Technology Group. For major server infrastructure upgrade, which include new servers, new storage, virtual desktop interface. And campus video storage servers. Uh, whereas the funds will be made available from operating fund balance, now therefore be a resolve. That a purchase order be issued to Distributed Technology Group for the server infrastructure upgrades. Uh, which include new servers, new storage, virtual desktop. Interface and campus video storage servers in the amount of one million fifty-one thousand four hundred ninety-seven dollars and twenty cents.
Is there a session? Thank you. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed resolution carriers? Thank you, Trustee Caswell, for your very long list of resolutions.
That's a lot of good, and these are.
A lot of great.
I mean, that very last one is probably the most important one to me.
Yes, absolutely.
They, I think they're beyond their useful life, and it's critical that we get this one done as soon as possible.
Your trust people are dying that strongly every time.
I mean, there's a lot of needed infrastructure bids here, but that one's probably the most important.
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, personnel and community relations, charge of creating of a.
I do, so we meet at five o'clock before these meetings, we met tonight, we mostly discussed. Future items for the September meeting, which we also reviewed the current dates we have left. As well as next year's dates, and I just wanna point out that at the end, it says date of next meeting is August twenty-sixth, that is incorrect, we're still looking on a date.
I already have that cropped out, yeah.
It's, we're looking for a date in September, um, this would reflect all committees as well, um, but, um, and again, most of the items are future agendas. We discussed the state of negotiations between due and uh college, um, which is now going to mediation. I will go to mediation shortly, but that way people don't, I tell everyone we're starting, they're still be starting shortly. Um, and that's about it, because the rest is, well, confidential. Any questions? The first resolution I'm gonna ask our chair to read because it involves me.
Um, I offer resolution seventy-five and move its adoption. Whereas senior community college trustees Donald Moweni Trustee Leadership Award honors the trustee who has demonstrated significant commitment to his or her local community college. Through advocacy, fundraising, and professional contributions in support of our local institution. Trustee Michael Dupree has exemplified these values through his steadfast commitment to students, thus the advocacy for accessible public higher education. And his tireless work in promoting equity, transparency, and community engagement at Duchess Community College. Trustee Dupree has been an instrumental voice in guiding the institutional governance, fostering campus-wide collaboration. And supporting initiatives that enhance academic excellence and student well-being. The Board of Trustees of Duchess Community College believes the trustee Dupree's service and leadership reflect the highest ideals. Of the N Y C C T and legacy of Donald Moweni Junior. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of Duchess Community College hereby formally accepts the nomination of trustee Michael Dupree. For the N Y C C T Donald Moweni Trustee Leadership Award. And this board enthusiastically supports trustee Dupree's nomination and extends his deepest appreciation for his exemplary service. And unwavering commitment to the mission of Duchess Community College. Is there a second?
Second, thank you.
So um, what I will share with everyone is that Michael has already won this award, we were notified, um. But very strangely, they do make us pass this resolution, which is why we have this tonight. Um, so we were thrilled that Michael got this, um, and will be going up in September for him to officially receive this award. But this is required of N Y C C T brought to actually pass this, which. Where I kept asking, I'm like, are you sure we have to pass the resolution? I'm like, we're nominating, not enough. And then Mike's almost like, I am not reading. But I think we all recognize um, Michael's commitment to the college and. I think if anyone is worthy of this, it is you, so we cannot wait to celebrate with you.
Thank you very much.
Alright. Uh, is there a focus for?
Summer.
Well.
Um. Uh, London, yeah. Alright, is there any further discussion on this?
Congratulations.
Exactly. Um. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
I wanna note that I was going to stay, but I had to say, I had this.
I counted that in my head beforehand, I was like, he knows he can't have stayed. Thank you very much, resolution passed, congratulations.
Thanks, everyone, that's great flattering, it's a huge honor to have been nominated, much less win. I do wanna say that I'm accepting this award on behalf of the college. College has its own award, there's two plaques apparently. I'm hoping that this will give one more step up in the permanent, remembrance. Of community college life with the A C, N Y C C T C to know that we're moving ahead. And really rebounding here in Duchess, because that to me is what this really, this board is about. I don't think that I do anything more honestly than what everybody in this board does, because we're a very collegial board, Ryan. You should be getting this too in some way because you're working your, you know, what all in the summer before you even really start school. So at any rate, thank you all, I'm very grateful, but again, grateful mostly for the college and what we made it here in the last. Ten, five years, ten years, whatever I've been on, sorry.
But you were instrumental in a lot of that, and that's where you are very humble, but I think your. Commitment to the college is very unique.
Thank you.
So. Do you wanna read your next resolution?
Oh, yeah, sorry.
He's in a.
And by the way, my cheeks are.
Exactly.
I have, I have light fever, everybody, so that my cheeks are rosy from being blushing as well as the fever, just saying that. Um, I, Michael Dupree, I'll offer resolution two oh two five dash seven six and move its adoption. Whereas Ms. Evelyn Page, she retired from the Board of Trustees of Duchess Community College after one year of thing with service as. Wanted to see her service, and whereas during her tenure as a member of the board for two thousand, two years. Twenty-three to two thousand twenty-five, Ms. Page, she served honor in distinction as being outstanding representative of the board. And whereas Ms. Page provided guidance and support to the current president of Duchess Community College, her fellow board members into the student body of Duchess Community College. And whereas upon her departure to Board of Trustees, which is to recognize and commend Ms. Page. For her dedicated and devoted services and member of the Board of Trustees. Now therefore be resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby extend its appreciation. To Ms. Page, she for dedication and commitment to the excellence of Duchess Community College. And be a further resolve of the Board of Trustees hereby approve this resolution recognition of her exemplary service to D C C. And be a further resolve of the Board of Trustees hereby grants Ms. Page the status of trustee emeritus.
Is there a second?
Second, thank you.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just like to add that, uh, you know, and thank Evelyn for her service, she was a member of the Finance and Facilities Committee. Uh, with me, and so I appreciate all her input and the discussions we had and issues during her time. Thank you, Evelyn.
Now, what is a trustee emeritus?
So trustee emeritus is for someone that had served in that role, um, anytime you have someone that is. Uh, we have some professors that we give emeritus status to, so it's an honorary title, kind of recognizing their commitment to the institution. And their impact on that institution. So she would, even though she's not a trustee, she, if she so chose, could say that she was trustee emeritus. Um, to be both of us down, um, sort of, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
There are.
Aye, thank you very much, no opposed, I'm gathering. Alright, moving on to the report for the student trustee, trustee Chuck.
Remember. I accidentally kind of read a little bit of this going before.
Say this thing back, say it here.
Um, so we met over a week ago and we talked about the graduation cord. Um, yeah, that was really the bulk of it, talking about the graduation cord and what's going on.
Awesome, yeah.
Setting up your trips, your many trips.
Yeah, you guys are doing a lot for the ball, so I'm sure.
I think I heard three times in New York, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, good for you.
Great, yeah, no, it sounds like a lot going on, which is exciting, and. I think, you know, students those are coming in, you know, especially new students, kind of hearing, you know, that engagement is so.
Well, I'm very excited for Halloween Fest, the Halloween Fest is a lot of fun, so.
Good.
Get them in.
Alright, moving on to my report, um, as trustee Dupree alluded to, we are not going to have. Um, the August board meeting. So I'm going to appoint a nominating committee uh this evening for our reorganization meeting, which will be in September, so I'm going to appoint. Trustees Castella, Caswell, and Pratt to serve on a nominating committee um. For the leadership roles with the board. So busy um at the community college, even though it is summertime here, so Stuart Dawes, the coordinator of Veterans Services. Had the opportunity to participate in a Veterans and Military Families Resource Fair. Um, hosted at the American Legion and sponsored by Senator Pinchi. To talk about the um opportunities at D C C and federal funding to support veteran needs, he also met with. Duchess County Veterans Affairs Director Adam Roche to talk about um the offices of Veterans Affairs One Stop. Um, and that program is latest began as early as this fall, which is very exciting. The daycare center had the opportunity to host SUNY Chancellor Dr. King and the Commissioner of the Office of Children and Family Services. Along with uh many distinguished guests, as part of that event, there were poor students, parents that were able to participate in a panel discussion. Um, and they were very excited to be included and really engage with that group of people. There is a new partnership between the Trio Office and Saint James Episcopal Church in Hyde Park. That has resulted in meaningful support initiative for summer resident fall students. Since early June, the church has been delivering warm home-cooked meals. To summer housing students every Saturday through P M, and will continue to do so through the last Saturday before fall, move it. Uh, this has been greatly appreciated by this team, but I'm sure they appreciate having a warm cook.
I know that they're very well, and they're very, they're very community oriented.
No, that's wonderful. Um. Hmm, so we spoke a little bit earlier about the tour of the daycare center and nursery lab that uh Chancellor King was. Present for, so that kind of helped to kick off the statewide launch of the Free Community College Initiative. Um, and had the opportunity to bring a lot of influential uh individuals right here to campus.
Of what?
So that concludes my report. Dr. Jordan?
Thank you, Sheriff Wesel. Um, I want to start this evening with uh some introductions. Uh, and since Dennis is closest to the podium, I'm gonna ask him to introduce uh the two. I can't say newest members because one of them is so.
I'm gonna add.
But to influence uh Matt and uh Tim and their new roles here at D C C.
Yeah, so I'm very happy to uh introduce, we'll start with uh Tim Miller. Uh, he's our new Deputy Chief of Security Campus Safety. Uh, Tim had a distinguished career with the York State Police. Uh, recently at Barris College, and uh so happy to have Tim on board. You, will say something?
Uh. I'm used to her saying, oh, you're the slot. I just wanted to thank the board for your confidence and allowing me to come here, uh, very community oriented. Uh, I feel this is a very community oriented place, wanna thank the cabinet for uh working with me as well. And uh I just feel blessed to be working with Matt, known that for a long time, and uh he's the right man for the job. Thank you.
You're also uh recently uh Matt DeDonna, as many of you know, have been with Duchess for seven years. Senior investigator role, and it's been served as Deputy Chief for a few times as well. And so I had a distinguished career with the town of Poughkeepsie. And then other law enforcement agencies. And congratulate Matt, he's already the chief of security in campus safety. Matt.
You have to say something.
Oh, hi. It just is odd for me to sit here at this point, but uh I am grateful for the opportunity, um. Uh, this was a second career for me that I didn't, I didn't see coming from the beginning, because I told everybody from the beginning, I was happy in the role as the investigator. And um. Being able to move out like this at this point in my career, as Tim said, it's a blessing, uh, working with Tim, I know it's gonna be uh. It's gonna be a great experience, I'm gonna be able to unload a lot of stuff. Pretty easy transition, but it's a little bit, so. And uh we got some pretty good ideas, so we'll work with, thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, thank you.
Uh, next, I'm gonna ask Susan to introduce uh Kaya.
Yes, I use my components instead of the good. Um, so I'm really pleased to introduce Kai Phillips, Kai joined Duchess Community College in June as the new Executive Director of Marketing Communications. She brings a strong background in higher education, marketing, communications, and creative leadership. She previously served as the Creative Director at Manhattanville University, she had uh, and she held communication roles also at SUNY Purchase and U Albany. In her career so far, her work has supported key institutional goals such as enrollment growth, brand visibility, and community engagement. She has already jumped right into her work and has hit the ground running, and we're very excited to welcome her to the D C C community.
I just wanna say thank you to the board, um, and for everyone of the confidence in me, and I'm very excited, I realize this is uh very exciting. Joining the community between capital improvements and sweet feedback, uh, we've got a lot of momentum going, and I'm happy to build on it. Thank you all.
So, welcome of Kai, uh, Tim and Matt, welcome to your new role, uh. Although you just told me that you would give all the role, work to Tim. You didn't say that in the interview. But glad, glad to have you on these roles. Uh, next, I'm gonna ask uh Scott uh to talk to us about enrollment.
Yeah, first mention summer, which is uh pretty much in the books, we have sixteen hundred forty-two students. And about ninety-four hundred credits, so that's an increase of ninety-four students from last year, plus I have sixty-six credits. Uh, we budgeted aggressively and we still, that went over the budget goal by about twenty-seven thousand dollars, so it was a good summer. Uh, for fall, we right now have three thousand one hundred seventy-five students for three thousand, thirty-six thousand four hundred fifty-five credits, that's gonna increase up two hundred thirteen students. Which is seventy percent above where we were last year. Uh, full-time enrollment is up sixty-two students and part-time is up one hundred fifty-one. Now with the part-time increases, not just our students, it's only mostly returning students, but it's not just our students coming back from this year. We have two hundred and fifteen students who've been gone for over a year, we've come back this year, that's over sixty more than we had last year at this time. Some of its reconnect, particularly students who happen to be in one of those programs and are saying, hey, I can go back and get my degree for free now, but it's also just, we've been. Advertising heavily with adults and we hit this. Move those students hard, people going back as far as ten years who haven't been here, and it's really paid off, students coming back and. Um, so far, we've been looking at SUNY reconnecting the impact, impact has been modest so far, um. Our two most popular power of programs, the ones the students keep asking about, nursing and mediation events. Both those cohorts will fall before reconnect even so now, so there's not much we could do with that. Uh, some programs are seeing some growth, um, engineering, electrical technology, architectural technology. Construction technology management, E M T and mental health assistance. Construction, technology management, EMT and mental health assistant. They are all on track to grow pretty significantly in the fall. But all of them are also well on the way to attract the growth before, maybe like, most of them grew last year. It's just a continuation of the growth they've been having. Um, a couple of the programs are actually trending to have declines. Being the computer information systems and computer programming. Uh, programs right now, they are not seeing growth, not seeing a lot of students in those programs yet. We're doing some special advertising. Just from Kaia this week, to try to hit, hit some of those students, trying to bring some of those back. Other programs showing growth include air conditioning, business transfer, criminal justice transfer, elementary ed and general studies. And uh, human services and visual arts also growing in new students that are overall, they're flat because they have two local Chinese students. Applications are up nearly ten percent over last year and twelve percent with our internal app, which is one that really matters. Um, the SUNY app, we give maybe a bit of our apps to SUNY application, but they heal, let rate out those students is less than five percent. Uh, SUNY graciously have been pushing us to start using their app for everybody. Uh, because they want, you know, to track it, we don't trust them.
Yes, great.
Something, there, there are some advantages of, well, maybe advantage where they can do uh, financial verification or healing students. Last time they called us, we had to say, I stood up, I'm prepared for eight, so you want to see them do it well, we do not really want to have them. Control the application, worry about the students coming in. Um, for the residence hall, we have two hundred fifty-two committed, admitted applicants compared to two hundred thirty-six this time last year. Um, on top of that, we just completed negotiations with the CIA and they will be taking uh, one minute of the top floor. For both fall and spring at almost full price.
At better prices by far, thank you.
Yes, yeah, so much better negotiators, much better this time. They're a bit over, they're all unable to talk to a person or two at the CIA, they don't have anything planned. So they're gonna have this fee for a little bit, a little while. Um, so that's a, that's a good thing. Um. So between our own growth and this new agreement, we're gonna have a whole residence hall, which is really needed. It's gonna help us financially. It's gonna help us as we look for a new investor, but the uh, but the hall of fall is something we made last minute changes to report, talking about all your life. The strategic plan, it puts us really good place for next year, but also moving forward. So I'm really happy.
They had very updated numbers that I read.
And while I finish here on the red, so I want to give kudos to Kaia over there, right, our staff and what they've done over the past few years. They've been a big part of the growth, both in terms of retention of the students and in terms of uh, reaching out to bringing in students, that's been a great thing. Uh, I mention this because Kaia is leading the role. Uh, she's not leaving DCC, but she's going to be our new director of the A seven program. Uh, she'll still be around and she has a great group that's been with her for a couple of years and also confident they can forward and continue. Any questions?
I have one, yeah, I just, we've been here. So the um, the agreements we have with the other colleges that are rejected, that they would come here. Uh, choose to come here and then they make some grades transfer over back. When do we, when do we receive that? When would we see that as a bump or possible bump? Are you already receiving students in that, from that cohort and it's proof that you mentioned or?
Yeah, we would see most of them now. Typically, they're getting fifteen to twenty here from that, those initiatives, mostly from the halls.
Uh, I know that you said we're seeing an increase in our EMT um, enrollment, so. Where are we compared to last semester? Or let's take last fall and then in terms of EMT versus paramedic? Do you have those numbers?
It is pretty evenly split between the two and I think we're up like eight students. It's a small program, we're up eight students compared to last year. And last year, then the growth of. From the year before, so.
And then, so we're not maxed out in that program, yeah, correct?
We're close to maxed out and that's something I didn't mention, all, some of these programs, some of the other um, reconnect both were almost maxed out. To particularly construction technology, architectural technology, we're about out of, of faculty and space to, to accept more students, so. Um, I'm expecting a bit of softening in enrollment in the next group, it's because we're maxed out in so many places. So we've got to try to bring in students in some of the other areas. I do expect August to be busy though, because we've been advertising so hard to connect. And with the project advance, we'll be going out for adult students. There are a lot of students further up in our pipeline, weren't quite ready to register yet. But I think there's gonna be a bit of a rush in August.
I will say, I, I, for the longest time, I thought it was because I'm on the board, but I think I'm on your email list for that. So, which is very strange, like, and I have quite a few degrees after I. Maybe I want another, I love education. Um, so I, I am seeing firsthand the outreach that you're doing on those. Um, and it's been really good. Can we just have, if you can send um, to Joya, a list of the programs that are maxed out? Obviously nursing, you know.
Right, okay.
Down, but the rest of them on there and then the ones that you're getting close on. Um, just so we as a board can be aware of that. And then I'll also offer to my colleagues, I get updates weekly on enrollment. So I kind of always know where we're standing with that. Would it be helpful for the rest of you if that were shared weekly uh, as well? Okay, so Joya, if you can do me a favor and just forward that um, to the entire board moving forward, I'm big on everyone being informed. And honestly, Scott, your news has been really good for the year that I've been chair, so I, I kind of look forward to your emails.
Good news and the programs and fields that we really need to kind of help expand those.
And that's why I want to see what we're maxed out on, because you know, I think we really need to. Yeah, I mean, we know nursing faculty is a problem, um, you know. Yeah, and you know, when we're looking at, you know, the lab space, um, and we're seeing how limited that is. You know, I think these are all sort of larger discussions as to where we're going as a college and where I think the legislature and the community. Need to understand that we can't continue to grow unless we have kind of a reimagining of space. Then things moving and, but also really like, how are we working to attract professors? I know, was it last fall, we had a nursing professor job um, there. You know, so, so do we need to do that for other fields? You know, we have some great resources, trustee Castella. Um, you know, in terms of access to a lot of employees out there. So are there things that we need to do to kind of better work those angles and to be able to attract? I mean, I would be honest, if I were not on this board, I would one hundred percent be an adjunct here in nursing department. I cannot do that, but I also encourage friends of mine all the time. I'm like, hey, you have your masters, you would be a great professor, you should do that. And you know, they're always kind of interested. So I think that there's a lot of people like that by word of mouth and, you know, kind of looking at these. Different degrees that we offer, you know, amongst ourselves and kind of all the resources that we have, what can we do to help? The college succeed now.
Exactly. But I also think it's important to recognize that a lot of these programs, the, that, that they're technically based. So that we have to be understanding of in some of these budgets too, because if we're gonna ban them.
Yeah, we cannot double these programs overnight, like these are things that will take a lot of time and effort.
And support and.
But, yeah, and that's why when we were looking before it, you know, classroom space and lab space, then you know, I was like cringing. When I was looking at the picture of the nursing lab there, there's so much is involved, you know, in terms of sim labs and, you know, it's like, we're not there.
The new picture, the imagined picture?
Oh, it's so much better, yes.
I mean, when you go to, you go to labs now, the, the W's are sometimes from the sixties with their frozen R faces, you know.
Yeah, not just policies doesn't teach in the evening, can we teach courses using their labs? Can we teach courses in the, in the hospitals?
I think there's a lot of, you know, I think we kind of have to be open to a lot of different scenarios, but I think without the staff to teach them.
It doesn't matter.
You know, we know that students are there.
Yeah, and I understand that. Like, I look at what Sue Serino just recently did, this senior job there. And they had several hundred people that are willing to work that are seniors coming out to say, I, I take a couple of hours.
Pardon? I'm actually looking at this here.
In all seriousness, though, there's a lot of great talent, however, and that was the concept of bringing them out. Here's individuals that were going out and really highly skilled trade fields. To focus in on and I would, to be a part of that, I'm sure Duchess was probably a part of that. But um, certainly this will, I don't, it was so, so.
It's like with our aviation maintenance program, we're considering now even opening the application that's spread, because you have so much overflow of the fall and completely because of summer. Uh, gotta take that away. A lot, we're gonna have to change the schedule, like it's gonna be difficult.
We another hanger. And by the way, is everyone aware?
Yes.
Most wages in, in those areas, where we.
Well, I mean, like if you look at, I think there's no better example than EMT paramedic. Um, you know, if you look at a paramedic. They, in a lot of ways, can do more than me as a nurse. They can intubate someone in the field. They are acting, you know, entirely autonomous. Um, whereas, you know, I would have twelve doctors standing around me and, you know, and they're doing everything. And yet they're making a fraction of what a nurse is making. And there is, in my opinion, no greater underpaid field. Than that right now. And you know, we keep saying, oh, we need to, you know, rich, you know, attract more people to this. We have to pay them, right? And I'm sorry, but you're not gonna keep people as a paramedic doing what they're doing, if you're paying them what you're paying them. So, I think we have to look at EMS in this county. Uh, you know, we obviously initially will get EMS throughout the country, but this is what we control right here. And I think that, you know, it starts with a respectable wage, because they are not earning that right now. Letting you go back to your remarks, President Jordan, since we've all taken over.
It's set it for, uh, questions for uh, Scott. Thank you.
I, I think we asked Scott enough. Scott has a lot of work to do after this.
Thank you, Scott. Sure appreciate it. Um, uh, each month I uh, try to shout out. Uh, a group that uh, I uh, consider unsung heroes, meaning that we don't get to celebrate them often. Um, this month, uh, I want to shout out our county legislature and the county executive's uh, office. Um, and the leadership there for their collaboration and support with us. Um, their celebration of our relationship. Uh, and uh, no, to no small measure. Their approval for twenty twenty-five, twenty-six budget, but the relationship, uh, I feel. Uh, has been strengthened over the last four years because of a kind of openness and collaboration. Uh, sharing the information and thoughts and so forth. So, uh, I want to celebrate them and ask you all to join me in celebrating. More county executive and her team. Uh, the last thing I'd like to do. Uh, is show you a video clip that comes out of uh, marketing and communications. Uh, like yesterday, we uh, received uh, delivery on the newest. Um, member of the Baboons fleet, which is an air force uh, jet. Uh, neat T-one Jayhawk, uh, that's been added to our fleet. And I want to thank um, uh, Jenna, uh, SuRishi, as well as John Trosy. And Ron Hicks, uh, and all the members of our, our team here for, especially marketing. Were out there in the blazing uh, sun yesterday, uh, watching their rivals. So, uh, Marissa, let's see if you can get the video going. It's sort of.
Leader of the Falcon Fleet, the T-one Jayhawk. This former air force jet was used to train advanced pilots. And now it's joining our aviation maintenance technician program to help train the next generation of aviation pros. It received the ceremonial water salute, marking the end of its military career and the beginning of an exciting new chapter in education. What makes this aircraft so special? It's the first jet in our program with a fully digital cockpit. No other college in our region has anything like it. Students will get real world, hands-on experience with cutting-edge tech right here at DCC. Welcome to the fleet, Jayhawk.
Very cool. So, Madam Sheriff, that's my report.
No, and I will say, so I was in a meeting yesterday afternoon and my phone started blowing up. With texts and videos and uh, more pictures if you can count, from Ron Hicks to Michael and I on this jet. And he was so excited, could not imagine.
Oh, yeah.
So, uh, we were seeing, I think, I feel like he was working for marketing yesterday, videos and I'm like, thank you, Ron, it's lovely. Um, is there any further business to come to?
I have one, I, I just want to point out to everybody, the trustee cloud is not here tonight, you know, that's why we also couldn't make an August meeting. Because she has a brand new play, uh, opening on Broadway, uh, August nineteenth. I have tickets to see it, it's off, but it is about the life of Alexander McQueen, the fashion designer, it's awesome. And I can't wait and to celebrate her with this milestone, so that's the reason why she's dying.
Um, so as sort of a good segue, um, we have struggled with getting any date in August. For a forum of the board, um, and then our September meeting is on Rosh Hashanah, so we are going to be moving that. Um, for that reason, so what we're looking to do is combine the two, hopefully earlier in September. And we will also have the county legislature recently appointed um, a replacement for uh, trustee Piniachi. So that is Michael McCormick, who will be joining us. Uh, so he will be at our next meeting. So we'll be back to full board, which should be good. Um.
And who isn't alone, like Angela also, not Angela, but one night all the time.
Correct, so I think having someone really who's shown his commitment to the college for a very long time. And I will tell you, he has been pushing to get on this board for over twenty years, so um. Exactly, absolutely. Yeah, no, I mean, I think with everything going on, it will be instrumental, so we are very excited to have him. Um, like we're looking to swear him in, hopefully next week we gather. Uh, so he will be joining us. Uh, so again, next meeting is to be determined. Seeing nothing further, thank you all for joining us on this evening. I apologize that it was as lengthy as it was, but um, obviously a lot to go over this evening, so. Not a resolution, but if there's nothing further, can I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you so much, have a great evening, everyone safely.